Also, NAACP at Black Business Day in Austin. I was listening to a song and it talked about staying encouraged. And so, I would, I would like to say that I pray for all of you family and that y'all all stay encouraged. It's a privilege and honor to serve. We had, last week, we had our Boy Scouts that came before you at the last meeting. We had our Court of Honor at the St. Francis of Assisi Church. We had several Scouts who advanced. And again, we have an Eagle Scout project coming up on April 13th, the same day as the city celebration parade. And so, please come out and support this young man. He'd be with Troop 1906, he'll be the third Eagle Scout. And so, we plan to have three Eagle Scouts for the 2019 year. So, please encourage these young men as we're doing some great things in our community. Had the opportunity, again, to participate in some other activities. But again, I just want to leave y'all with, please be encouraged.
Counselor Reddick. I have Austin at a Republican Party at the end of the month's meeting. But it's always a pleasure to serve and I look forward to the growth of the city and where we're headed as a unified community. Counselor Jones.
This past week, I've been in talks with Judge Duhem and Dr. Phelan at the University to see how we could fix the back bridge that's been broken for about five years. And it seems as though we've been making some traction and should be getting some things done here soon. Still working on a strategic street plan as well as light plan. And just hearing any citizens' comments or concerns and trying to do my best to work on them. As always, it's an honor and a privilege to serve. Oh, and sorry, there's also five items under the new business that was actually being on the agenda that I highlighted to the mayor.
Counselor Williams. The biggest thing was this last, well, I met with and you heard from some of the residents on that issue regarding zoning ordinance. And the, the James Muse Parkway situation is tied to the $5 million US Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. Because while they are emergency funds, they're still with Department of Commerce, EDA. So, I went to Austin and I met with them and we went over everything. I shared with them the actual check that had been returned from the railroad. And it turns out there was a changeover in personnel and what have you. But long story short, they got to see the actual check dated July 2017. We thought that process was done. And in going forward, Attorney Griffin was, did a wonderful job to help us in touching bases with Mr. Mauer. He located our check. So, I shared with them, we were in the system, this is proof, a note from Mr. Mauer sharing he was returning our check. It's still dated and they're still willing, based on that, to work with us. I assured them that the applications have been resubmitted by our former city engineers, Lime Decker, and that it was at no fault of the city that the railroad piece had not been done. So, with that, working with public management and we're doing the paperwork necessary, getting a few letters, things like that, and trying to pursue, they said their average is somewhere between two to three million. We're applying for five so that we can have frontage roads from James Muse all the way down the north side of 290 to hopefully Leendo Parkway, which will attract new businesses. We've got some businesses already on standby for that. But also to help with our emergency situation because of the flooding that takes place on Highway 290, particularly in bad times or just consistent rain. And that's what's allowing us to apply for these emergency funding because of that, now that we're an official part of the evacuation route for Houston and Harris County. So, they're working with us on that and so far it's looking good. Went to Judge, what was it, Columbus. We went to Columbus to listen to the Texas General Land Office on the $742,000 that we're being allocated. And now that we had finalized that piece, we went there, got our questions answered and learned a lot about it. And we're working on those funds to access, potentially replacing some of the monies we went in repairing equipment during things like Hurricane Harvey, which is where this money is coming from. I spoke with Attorney Zech and we're going to take a look regarding Ruby Street. And the fact that just a few short months ago, we were informed by an expert in that area. And he shared the FEMA flood plane that Ruby Street is on as to what direction we can and should take, even on a potential moratorium on building. But also working with Waller County Emergency Management Office to see how and what, because they're the ones that are overseeing the funding that we're able to potentially tap into from the state and the feds for potential home buyout plans and things of that nature. So, we're working with them on those things. The National Collegiate Cricket Association, last weekend, not yesterday, but the weekend before, held a collegiate cricket tournament right here in the city of Prairie View. And found out that there's some 70 colleges that have a cricket tournament, cricket team. And now Prairie View is looking at one. But we had Yale, University of Houston, LSU, MIT, Texas A&amp;M, USF, UT Arlington, and University of Massachusetts right here in Prairie View. This past week, there were 10 more teams. And those teams, well, I'll just say U of H beat MIT in the final a week ago. And Atlanta, the Atlanta Fire from Atlanta, Georgia, beat Nepal, who were the existing national champions in a tournament. So, locally, those things are happening. The, oh, the university, I had a meeting just as recently as this morning with the developer of the cricket complex, particularly the College of Agriculture, their dean and some others. And they're looking at getting involved with the landscaping and the greenery and possibly putting greenhouses around the edge with exotic plants and things like that. There's a group from Vietnam that's in touch with our agriculture who's wanting to come to Prairie View to grow a particular orchid that's, that's unique to over there, that they think would grow well in Texas and things of that nature. So, there's a lot of notoriety. 290 was backed up yesterday in both directions because people slowed down on looking at the cricket complex and what was going on there. The, I listed on here that city secretary applications were to be sent to council. But I reflected on a conversation, I think, with legal counsel, with our city attorney, Zech. And I'm not sure we can do that, but that's what I was trying to do. And Councilman Wallace had some questions on the city's strategic comprehensive plan. So, I pulled that out and have plans, I was going to give it to him today, but we're going to make that available so that when he comes with discussions, since the city has one, he'll have the information to, you know, ask and check on different things that are in the plan. Other than that, I'll skip the rest of mine, that's enough on that, on my report. Counselor?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Two questions, the cricket complex. Have they, who is doing the, so we don't get into some of the situations that we heard today, who is actually doing the inspection process on the cricket? Where are they at? I know they're doing, they want to do a lot of things and I think you've been talking about them. But where are they actually at as far as developing, development? And who is like checking, doing the checks and balance, you know, who's doing that?
Okay, right now, there's nothing to inspect. We've had Trilogy Engineering go out for the totality of it from an engineering perspective. But until they build something like restrooms or concession stand, there's no building for Bureau Veritas to inspect. So, in touch with them and as they submit those plans to build it, the permanent restrooms came up. But right now, they just got dirt and grass and there's nothing to inspect. That's how cricket, soccer and several things, it's a lot, lot less than even baseball.
So, there's Trilogy Services, our emergency engineer services are?
Yes.
Well, why did we have an emergency meeting to approve them and then in the emergency meeting, emergency meeting was council and then we went on and so how are their checking buildings when we approved them to be our?
The charter gives the mayor the right to do it 30 days. It doesn't have to be approved for 30 days. And this was done some, some time ago. And then I brought it to council for approval. They have not done anything other than council approved them for the FEMA project on the building. So, they haven't done anything, the council had approved.
So, we'll talk about that at number nine. The question I just, I was making sure that, I know as they're, they had some food trucks out there. We want to make sure that, just like all other companies have to do, they have to get a permit from the city. Want to make sure that they have those permits. We just want to make sure that as we're growing, people are coming to the city, that everybody has the same rules applying. So, if they're going to be putting on new, putting, I guess the original question was, was there an application put? And your answer was no. There's been no application for, for the new things that they want to build. It was just kind of like what's coming?
Right, they haven't built anything, so there's no application. When they look to build permanent bathrooms, they're going to submit them, they're going to go through the Bureau Veritas process just like every other?
No, no, I'm not just talking about the bathrooms. I'm saying like if they're going to build, whatever they build, the process where they'll give the plat, they'll give the, the process. And we'll approve and then it goes through a person looking at the design and then Bureau Veritas. Who is going to be walking us through this process? But you, I think I'm hearing you saying it hasn't happened yet.
Right, and there's nothing to plat. You don't plat a baseball field. You schedule it out and you have the dimensions, you don't plat.
Well, they had, the reason why I'm asking is they, out of all the fields they're going to build, they got, they say field one is over here, field two is over here, field three is over here. And, and I'm just simply asking, who made sure that what they submitted to us, similar to what we were talking about, all these other people coming in, residential or commercial, who was handling that process?
The engineer, as I shared with you, the engineer took a look at the total, they went out, they were their engineers and all that. Trilogy did that part. But from a, from a cricket field standpoint, there's nothing to inspect. It's a flat field and the only thing they do is lay down a line out from the pitcher to the batter. That's it. And, and when they clear, you know, property owners are able to clear their land and things like that, but that's all they've done.
I'm saying, I, I get it. I, I'm just simply saying like so, when we were, when we were just having this discussion in reference to automotive place or any type of structure, there's how many parking lots, there's a, there's a designation on a process on how things go. And all I'm simply asking is who was managing that process? I think you said Trilogy. And you also said they currently do not have anything that they've submitted to build anything else.
Correct. And as they will, Trilogy or whoever we ultimately wind up with will be reviewing those plans. And I've been in touch with Bureau Veritas, that's why I know there's nothing to inspect. Yeah, they're aware and on top of it. Next item, five, discussion on mayor's response in reference to the internal review memo by CPA Erskine Payne. Counselor Rowland.
Mr. Mayor, with, with all due respect, I will ask you, you've seen what's on number five. I feel what you put on the bottom was very inappropriate, doesn't go on the agenda. Like the way, if you wanted to put this in a, in a subsequent document, that is fine. But I want to be respectful to you. And, and what you did here, I just want to make sure that we understand what the game we're playing. And so, if it was something that was inadvertently done, that's okay, I'll accept your apology. But like I don't, this, what you put here is, is, you know, what is unacceptable in reference to an agenda item. And so, if you wanted to put this in a subsequent document, that'd be different. My, my, the only reason why I put this on the agenda was because we were all a team working for the city of Prairie View. We all got the audit report and council voted just to simply ask the mayor to give us a response on the items that Mr. Payne had highlighted that we, what we saw. And this response, Mr. Mayor, is an unacceptable response because there were some specifics that he asked in reference to the people handling money processes that you seem to have not gotten to. And so, I, I will continue to respect you. But would you, how you put this on the agenda was disrespectful because we were simply just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I don't think anyone came at you specifically. But how you did this i- is, again, I'm trying to be respectful.
Well, in, in response and in due respect, as you say, the issue and the question was to make sure our processes were correct. And I outlined them specifically. Mayor Allen reviews supporting documentation and approves every invoice being processed to ensure city records are as correct as possible in order to cash duplicate payments or erroneous bills. And working with Ms. Johnson, we, we run into those things because sometimes one thing was already in and somebody resubmitted another. We double-checked it to make sure it wasn't getting paid twice. And even the, the cash policy to confirm and keep council informed, cash is no longer accepted for new connections. So, this is a part, administration deposits are prepared by one staffer and deposits list prepared by and taken to the bank by either Ms. Johnson or myself. The municipal court prepares deposits and is recounted by acting city secretary, Ms. Johnson with Judge Alexander Simmons present. And then Ms. Johnson takes the deposit to the bank. So, I wanted to give you the actual response to those concerns. Now, the other, the other thing, and I don't know if I had done it, that there was a trial today and just informing council on the fact that there was a court trial today that affected the city and that's just keeping you up on what's going on.
So, I guess my question is?
Yes.
Up until the part of Waller County District Attorney, you, you answered the questions that were presented by council. And I, and I think when we look at these processes, I think you've done a fantastic job of addressing an issue and putting systems in place to address that issue. Granted, we've been trying to have this higher treasury treasurer for the last three years. But I guess the issue with this isn't any of that because that's exactly what the council asked for. The issue is why you felt the necessity to speak as to how long Counselor Rowland has been on council, how long Counselor Randall has been, would you seek to accomplish by putting our names in this part? Because we have nothing to do with the report that you got from Erskine and Payne. We just approved after you get it. And so, we didn't, we didn't ask anything about a court case. We just asked about the processes that were put in place that would move us forward. And so?
A part of my charge is to keep council informed. When something happens regarding the city and you're not kept informed, you're, now, the timeframe, when you finish answering, the timeframe has to do with, it's great that council's asking these questions. The, the point being, for the last four, six, seven years respectively, these type of things were happening. Counsel, as you just stated, is been, been on me and, and I'll take that, to hire a treasurer. Well, we had a treasurer and all this money was taken. So, it's not a treasurer, it's doing it right. And that's why I'm giving you those processes. But the bottom part is to show that if the processes aren't in place, which we've put in place for the last little over two and a half years, that it's not a position. It's getting the city's business done right, checking on it, things of that nature. Now, council has never asked for these things ever in the last six, seven years that I've been sitting out in that audience. So, I'm giving you that which is in place to help keeping what happened from taking place again.
So, in response, in response, every, every year that we get a report from Erskine and Payne, we make the same request, whether it was David Allen, whether it was Frank Jackson, the same request went forward. Mr. Mayor, you've gotten these, J.J. can hear, he can tell you, Mr. Mayor, you've gotten this report from Mr. Erskine and Payne. What systems are you going to put in place to rectify these decisions, right? And just like with Mayor Allen, with Mayor Jackson, we try to be fully staffed, right? And you know, you felt need to put how long I've been sitting up here. If so, for the entire time, since I've been sitting up here, our objective is to be fully staffed. Am I telling the truth, Judge? Right, and we, we, that's been a consistent issue for the last six years for Counselor Rowland, four years for Counselor Randall. So, if that's going to be your justification for why you felt the need to do that, I would accept it. I mean, I don't, I don't take anything personal. But it just needs to be put on the record that, you know, there are ways to do things in the world.
And you're right, because as I've done before, it will not be the first time that I let you know with all the stuff that I'm doing, I am far from perfect. But I'm letting you all know and the, the one thing I'm trying to do is make sure as much as possible that I keep you informed. And if my way of doing it, as it says, this is Mayor Allen's response was requested and this is just my response, yours would be different, yours would be different, and that's okay. But you asked for mine and mine comes differently from someone else's.
I have two questions.
Sure.
One, the attorney, is this, is it, I mean, maybe I'm, I'm slow. This agenda item, did, did your council approve the way this is worded on the agenda?
To the best of my knowledge, this was not on here after CC Rowland.
Okay.
The rest of that was not on there at 5:30 on Friday when I approved it. It may have been, but if it was, I didn't see it.
Mr. Mayor, we're simply saying that we want to be respectful and on the same page. If this was going to be your response in a separate document that was not on the agenda, that would be different. And so, I, I just, I just, I'm, I'm?
That's on me, I'll give you that, that's on me.
My, my two questions.
Right, yes.
The reason why I asked for this is because last year, I'm going to paint the picture. Last year, city council didn't get this other report. We didn't get the, the internal memo. So, we didn't ask you to identify the same thing. We're, we're saying that three years later, we still have no city treasurer. We're trying to rectify that. The, the situation you talked about in your response, the person was the city treasurer and the city secretary, the same situation we currently have three years later. So, we're not talking about passing the buck to somebody else and how long someone's been here. We're simply asking that we are trying to support you to fully staff the office. You have been inconsistent and wanted to staff the office. The audit came back and we're, we're asking from the results of a third party again. They, and they talked about the treasurer, financial director, or someone who does accounts payable. This is three years later and we're, we asked for a response. And so, the response was not, what you did give the responses on how you're handling some of the invoices, but the response of like, hey, we plan to have a city treasurer in the next six, three to six months. We plan to do this in two months. I need money to do this and this. That, that's the kind of relationship we want to have. But when you come and you do what you did on this, that, that sends the wrong signal. Specifically to me, because you put my name in and I'm trying to figure, all I did was ask the question to you, can you give us an update? And so, I, I will take your apology that you gave and I will try to continue to maintain myself. But I'm trying to understand, you know, what happened here.
Well, let me, let me share this. You state that we're in the same situation we were three years ago. And I beg to differ with you. You did not, you did not, that, that is incorrect too. You did not have a mayor checking every invoice, signing every check in this office every day. You did not, no, you, yeah, but before me.
We're talking about three years ago.
No, well, we're talking about when?
Three years ago, we're not talking about four years ago, we're talking about three years ago. We're not talking about?
Hold on, I have the floor, Randall, I have the floor. Okay, I don't, I don't interrupt you all. But all I'm saying is, the situation is different. And while you're angry for a treasurer, you've got a mayor very involved in the process that you didn't have before when all this money came up missing. So, so you can't say it's the same scenario.
Have you moved the agenda to the next item?
So, right. Item six, discuss and take action.
Motion carried.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item six, discuss and take action to approve Ms. Vanessa Lampkin and Ms. Johnny Walker to Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. My name is on here only, and I didn't even actually even put it. But these are recommendations. I asked for someone to come from EDC to respond to the questions that Counselor Rowland particularly had last time. We've got EDC Director, Counselwoman Williams, and Dr. Vida Brown.
Who was there last time?
Ms. Brown.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor?
The, I guess my, my conversation is the wording on last meeting versus this meeting. Why, why was it changed?
Well, the only thing I did, because I think you asked that, I had the names in there before. City Attorney's Office suggested pulling the names. You asked, why weren't the names in there? So, I simply added them back. Other than that, I hope it's pretty much the same because that was the intent.
No, I didn't ask that, but the names, I asked for it to come back on the agenda the way it was at the last meeting.
No, that's not true. You asked at the last meeting, why aren't the names on the agenda? Because historically, you're right there and in. So, I simply asked Ms. Cortez to put them back. But the, the intent is there, what's your pleasure? You had some questions, do you want to ask one of the EDC directors those questions that you had last time? Or is it someone unready, Ms.?
Counselwoman Williams or Dr. Brown? In reference to the EDC, how many current, how many, how many current members do you currently have on your board? You go ahead, Dr. Brown.
I mean, I can actually address this this time.
Your pleasure.
Thank you. We have Director Wendy Williams, we have Director Vida Brown, we have Veronica Hodges, who's the director, we have Director Eazy, and I can't pronounce his name, his last name.
Do girl.
Gil Fredberg. And we have Director U. Daniels.
And Ms. Hodges.
She named.
That's her name, five, that's five.
Then she was two.
And so, y'all have?
She had names.
So, I guess she didn't have?
Yes. That makes us very functional.
This was on EDC?
I'm moved that we approved Ms. Vanessa Lampkin and Ms. Johnny Walker to Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
It's been properly moved and seconded. The council approved Ms. Vanessa Lampkin and Ms. Johnny Walker to Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
I have one readiness.
Counselor Rowland?
Did Economic 4B, y'all had this on your meeting agenda, did y'all approve these?
We've had it on our agenda several times where we would submit names. Each one of us were asked to submit names.
Specifically, my question is, did Economic 4B?
I specifically answered your question. You asked, was it on the agenda? I said it's been on the agenda several times.
Mr. Mayor? So, you can, you don't have to answer the question, but the question is, with the two names that are listed on the paper, that's coming before city council, that's Economic 4B, approved, field?
has Economic 4B approved, feel comfortable with the two names that we're gonna add? Because city council is the one who actually makes the, the vote and the recommendation. So we're asking, is that your signal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other unreadiness?
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll let the record show. Item seven, discuss and take action to confirm Mayor Allen's appointment and Ms. Sherry Johnson to city treasurer.
Uh, council, council, is it possible that we're going to executive session upon this matter or not?
I'm gonna look at your agenda.
The city of Prairie View, city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 5.1.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberations about real property, 551.073, deliberations about gifts and donations, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, deliberations about security devices, and 551.086, economic development. We're now adjourned into executive session.
Could you specify which one of those that, because that's not obvious.
And it was just a question as well, but now knowing that we can, I would like to move item number seven to the end of the agenda and so that way we could take care of city business and then go into, leave that item last.
Okay, we will change and move item seven down to the bottom of the agenda. Item eight, discuss and take action, well, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item eight, discuss and take action, that will wait also because that's concerning the Ms. Johnson and the treasurer's position automatically with the bank. So we'll go straight to item nine. Discussing possible action on the selection of city engineer position, Councilman Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmen citizens, I put this on the agenda, I think we had a discussion last meeting. We were trying to find out where, one, the question is, where are we at, Mr. Mayor, in the process with the engineer? And then I also had talked about some other recommendations that I would like council to hear about, once you give us an answer on where we're at.
Recommendations to engineer?
Right, where, where are we at with our process? Do we have a?
Uh, finalizing posting, that's what we are with it. It's about to be posted.
Okay, as soon as it's posted, we'll receive an email?
Sure. This is a little look to, remind me, we'll send, send the council a copy of the posting.
And, and what's the time here, two weeks, three weeks, a month?
I think Attorney Zech said the typical, somewhere around 45 days, 30 to 45 days, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yes, he did ask me to note though, for the record, that your interim appointment can go no longer than 30 days. And he probably will hit that timeframe before.
Perfect, without bringing it back to council.
We, we hit it. We approved Trilogy before the end of the year and we didn't approve them again.